Good evening, welcome to the workshop meeting for Pasco Council this evening of September 23rd, 2019. We have agendas available on the corner desk over there. That and a more detailed packet are available through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live through that website as well as through Charter Cable and also through Facebook Live. If you have a chance to speak with council coming up to the podium up here and sharing your name, we'd be thankful for record-keeping purposes. And if you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And with housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Alvarado.
President.
Brajas.
President.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
President.
Milne.
President.
Serrano.
Here.
And Watkins.
Here. And with all seven of us here, if you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item three is verbal reports from council members. Anybody attend a meeting or event that they wish to share with council? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to report that last Tuesday I attended the Public Facility District Meeting for Pasco. Progress continues to be made, and so it's just keep an eye for that. Not much specific to report other than we continue to progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, I attended the Hispanic Chamber Lunch. I also attended the PFD meeting with Councilmember Maloney. And then on Thursday, I attended the DPDA Board Meeting. We had a good discussion about the Fiery Foods Festival, so it seemed like it was a really big success and more exciting things happened. They also talked about that the DPDA was able to get a grant and that Mike Morales was able to secure, it looked like two grants for $50,000 each. So that's real good news. And then also on Thursday, I attended the City Park and Recreation Board Meeting for all three cities. And we had a great presentation by Zach Ratkai, and he stayed within the limits. It was a really good presentation. And then on Friday, I also attended the Kalima Delegation Video Conference. And so it was, that was good. Kind of laid out what they wanted to hear from us and what they, some of the things kind of planned, but mainly just the different meetings that were scheduled. And so I'm looking forward to it in two weeks.
Thank you. And Ms. Brajas.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Back the Blue Celebration this Saturday at the Garden Church. Many, many families, many officers were there. There are families there to support them. And I just want to reiterate, all the officers, all our first responders, you may not hear this enough, but thank you for all the service you do. Thank you for the service to the communities that you serve.
Thank you, Ms. Brajas. Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I attended two meetings. One was the Greater Columbia Accountable Communities of Health. I'm on the board for that. And nothing new to report, but they're still, they're going with their new, I guess, face. They have various faces for bringing health organizations together to do what they call practice transformation, which is improving the quality of communication between agencies for how they, you know, communicate about healthcare, about folks that deal with mental illness, things of that nature. So they're continuing to do that good work and also just another board meeting to move that work forward. And then I also improved, I also attended the Benton Franklin Council of Governments Board Meeting. And not much there other than, well, I mean, there's quite a bit there. The biggest thing takeaway that I would bring back to the city of Pasco is that in the past, for what they would call the Transportation Improvement Program, they would divide money from the state or federal in kind of by city. So here, Pasco, you get this bunch, and Kennewick, you get this much, and so forth. And really, the state does not want to have that approach anymore. They really want to look at significant projects that are, significant regional projects. And so really, being able to put our projects forward, these projects are of regional significance. And so really continuing to encourage Pasco to put those projects forth to manufacturing council governments because we can lose out on some great funding that they do have. So just, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And I think a sort of a shift from spreading the peanut butter to a bit more competitive in approach.
That's right. And it's really is the approach of the state that really changing direction.
Thank you. No other reports, we'll go on to Section Four on the agenda. A big part of the agenda tonight, items for discussion, the first of which being related to an update on the Regional River Shore Reconveyance Project. And I see that Mr. David Replug is coming on up. Good to see you, Mr. Replug. How's Tridec going?
He's doing well. It's good to see you as well. Good evening. Shall I go ahead and proceed?
Please do.
All right. Well, I think it's been probably close to a year, I think, since I last updated the council on what's taking place with the shoreline reconveyance effort. As you might recall, Tridec partnered with each of the respective cities to co-host public meetings where we got input and provided information to the public about the reconveyance effort. The one in Pasco, which took place at what was then called the Track Center. And at that point, we were still sort of finalizing the shoreline reconveyance legislation. I think we've since further moved forward with that effort. We have some draft legislative language that reflects the requests for each of the cities and counties and the port of Pasco. And put that into a map that pretty clearly shows what sections or parcels of land would be requested by each respective jurisdiction. And importantly, the legislation would transfer the land at no cost to the local governments and would not remove NEPA or any environmental reviews, but it would delay those until change was contemplated for any particular section of land. The reason for that being that doing the NEPA analysis ahead of time would be very expensive and very time-consuming. And the larger point is that as of right now, there are no major changes being contemplated. And so let's not put the cart before the horse. We have also went down to Pendleton for a, I think, a very positive government-to-government meeting with the Confederated Tribes of the Yumatilla Indian Reservation Board of Trustees. We had great representation from the Tri-Cities, including with Mayor Watkins, as well as Zach Ratkai from the city staff, Richland Mayor Bob Thompson, Richland City Manager Cindy Reince and Joe Shizel from the staff, Franklin County Commissioner Brad Peck and Keith Johnson, the county administrator. We also had Councilman Paul Parrish from Kennewick, Marie Mosley and Terry Walsh from the city of Kennewick staff, Commissioner Gene Reichman and Randy Hayden from the port of Pasco, and then myself and Carl from Tridec. And so we had an opportunity to sit with the Board of Trustees for probably a couple hours and help them to understand the goal. And each of the cities had a chance to share, you know, what they thought would be their long-term vision for the shoreline and the river shore and the reconveyance. And they were also able to share with us what issues or concerns that they had. I think the prime one being that there are a lot of culturally sensitive areas along the shoreline. There's a rich Native American heritage there and that we won't, and I think we collectively agreed that we wanted to respect that sensitivity and make sure that whatever happens with the reconveyance doesn't negatively impact those important sites. At the end of the meeting, I think the tribal Board of Trustees Chair said that it was a historic meeting. And I think that the goal for that meeting was first to better help them understand what we were up to here, but also to begin to establish a stronger relationship between the Tri-City community as a whole and the Yumatilla Tribe. And I think that was a really good step in the right direction. The other, the other goal or outcome that we discussed at that meeting was to put together what we sort of called Treaty Rights 101 Workshop. Over the course of the discussion, there was a recognition or acknowledgement that sometimes cities and counties and people in the, in the community don't necessarily fully understand the treaty rights and protections that are granted by the Treaty of 1855. And so we thought it would be worthwhile to host probably at Tridec a workshop where anybody from the city-county staff or elected officials who want to could get a better understanding. Following that meeting, we received a letter from the tribal council chair, just again outlining both thanking us for the meeting, but also a couple of issues or concerns that they had with the reconveyance proposal as it was. I don't think any of them were real deal-breakers, but there are things that we'll have to continue working with them on. And then I sent a letter back thanking them for the meeting and for the chance to share what was going on. And then also with the goal of following up with the staff to begin to work through the issues that were identified in the letter. Up to this point, I've not had any luck getting response from their staff to schedule any sort of a follow-up meeting, either to discuss the shoreline reconveyance or the Treaty Rights 101 Workshop. And so it's been several months since that meeting happened, and there's been a number of efforts, voicemails and emails sent. And again, like I said, I haven't had a response yet, but our goal is certainly to make sure that we do not circumvent engagement with the tribe and not only the Yumatillas, but also the Yakmas. Again, up to this point, we have not had any luck getting responses. But our goal is to continue to make some small tweaks to the legislative language to reflect the input that we got from the Yumatillas. And then also put together maybe a fact sheet that would help to better identify some of the concerns that are expressed, maybe aren't real concerns, but maybe people just need to better understand what would and wouldn't be involved. We have also received input and engaged with a couple of other community organizations. First is the Lower Columbia Basin Audubon Society, who has been fairly concerned frankly about the idea of the reconveyance. They just want to make sure that there wouldn't be any negative impacts to the wildlife and to the habitat. And so I had a chance to go speak to one of their meetings a few months ago and explain again what the reconveyance effort is all about. And then we've also engaged a couple of times now with Alliance for Loveable and Sustainable Communities, which represents a number of conservation groups in the area, including the Audubon Society, but also a variety of other ones. Both Audubon Society and the ALSC have provided us some input too, and we will take that under advisement as we continue to further refine the legislative language. And then our goal will be to hopefully include the legislation as an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 National Defense Authorization Act, or NDAA. That's the, that's one legislative vehicle that Congress passes just about every year. Sometimes Congress doesn't get a whole lot done, but they usually move the NDAA bill. And there's a track record of the shoreline reconveyance already being referenced in the NDAA bill previously. So there's some justification to have it in that moving forward. I talked with Congressman Newhouse's Legislative Director just earlier today to compare notes. And I think our plan moving forward is to continue to, like I said, tweak the, make a couple of small tweaks to the legislation. And then I think they would likely reach out to some of our Native American friends and try to get their input that way and go from there. And then they might possibly try to introduce the legislation in a standalone fashion first, recognizing that standalone legislation doesn't move very often in Congress these days. But it would begin potentially to move the process along and have it more well-positioned for the NDAA in the spring, late winter, early spring, because it would allow the Congressional Budget Office to score the legislation, which means it would determine whether or not there's any cost or benefit or cost to the federal government from the transfer. And then also it would allow the Army Corps of Engineers to formally weigh in and provide input to the legislation as well. I'm not certain again whether or not that will be the path that we ultimately take, but that's under consideration. And then also, we've had a chance to engage a couple of times with Chairman Adam Smith's staff. So Chairman Smith is important to this because he's the Chair of the Armed Services Committee that the NDAA bill goes through. And he's also from Washington State over in the Puget Sound area too. So we've had some good conversations with him or with his staff. And so at least they're aware of it. And I think we'll, because of that, hopefully have a little bit easier path with the amendment in the spring. And I think that's about where things are at. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chock-full year. A lot got done in the past year. Some big, important stuff. And I guess just adding a little bit of color or thought to, if this is clearly a marathon effort for the Tri-Cities area as a whole, the, here in the past year, what was far more murky on what specifically something might look like. I also know that each jurisdiction has had a little different flavor, and Pasco's had some, Pasco-specific work on what shoreline reconveyance might mean for a particular batch and whether or not to include it. So there's been a lot of moving parts on all of this. And as you pointed out too, I think also reaching out, in my recollection, the cities had never formally engaged with the Native American communities. And that was an excellent step on its face value. And I guess I would also report, and not to muddy the waters more, but Tri-Cities being a confluence of a lot of tribes and together too, that I had an opportunity because of a different issue, but it seemed timely. Mr. Zabel, myself, and Mr. Milne, we're in the council chambers of the Colville Tribe. So we did let them know that this was going on, that it was being worked through. So I don't think they went, oh, something else to say no against or anything like that. I think they were interested in that process. And also since Kennewick man turned out to be a Colville from genetic testing. So hopefully that doesn't muddy the water, but it does advance the question, the being able to reconnect to our river that we were all born from. So context, other thoughts from council members or status on the update. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Replug, for the presentation. Briefly, is there anything further we can do at this time to help advance the effort? Or we were in a side role and you'll let us know?
Well, I think that once we make those tweaks to the language, and I certainly want to share that with the appropriate staff or the council if you guys are interested, and make sure that all of the, all of our partners are comfortable with the changes. I know that the staff has seen the current version up to this point. And I think once we get to that point, we'd want to really kind of follow Congressman Newhouse's office's lead. If they want to put together any public events or meetings or reach out directly to the jurisdictions, then that might be the next step. I think the education process, I think, will continue to be an important priority with all of the citizens of the region to make sure that, again, they understand what's going on. And I do want to compliment the city staff, working with Mr. Zabel and with Mr. Ratkai. They both worked really hard and they've engaged very well with us. And we appreciated their work. And I think, I think, as the mayor referenced, there's been a lot of evolution in this process over the last year or so. And I think it's taken a lot of work from a lot of folks to get us to where we're at, but I believe we're in a pretty good place. And also just referencing the marathon that you mentioned, I think sometimes people forget that legislative, legislation in Congress takes a long time. Even if it's super easy, non-controversial, I use the example of the Manhattan Project National Historical Park that was created in the end of 2014. But that effort was about a five-year effort. And there were three states. It was bicameral, bipartisan, and three states all pulling in the same direction. It still took five years to get the legislation passed. And so, not that we want to take five years for this, but it's important to remember that sometimes it just does take time.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Just ensure too, that Pasco is committed to that process. We're available. So if you need us, and also as you pointed out too, staff have been very helpful and we're confident they'll be able to continue supporting. We're there for the next step.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we switch gears slightly and go in from our river shore go to cleanup of landfill. And we get some information from, I think, we've got an agenda report from Mr. Chief Bob Gere. You want to set us up here?
Yes, we have Chuck Grunenfelder and some of his staff to come in and talk about what's going on at the, I hate to call it the Pasco landfill, but everybody does, but the landfill on the edge of the city of Pasco that we're interested in, and the discussion about the movement of some barrels in what's called Zone A, out of that landfill into different disposal or incineration sites. And just kind of let council know what's going on with the planning effort, or first of all, the proposals that are on the table, and then a plan that we'll follow when there's a chosen alternative. So with that, Chuck, I'll let you introduce your people and...
Chief, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Members of council, other city Pasco staff, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Chuck Grunenfelder. I'm the Cleanup Site Manager with the Department of Ecology out of the Eastern Regional Office in Spokane. With me tonight, I have a couple of my colleagues, Jeremy Schmidt, project engineer also assisting me on the project. The back of the room is Bill Fies. He's a unit supervisor for our toxics cleanup program in Spokane. One member who isn't with us tonight is Erica Berisavoy. She's our public outreach coordinator and also actively involved in the project. Also want to point out that we have members of the potentially liable parties who are working on the project, doing the cleanup work. We have Barbara Smith in the audience. Barbara works closely with other members in a broad consortium of participation. So again, thank you. We appreciate this invitation to share information about the proposed final cleanup remedy for the Pasco landfill site. We've been working closely with various parties who will be performing this cleanup work. And we've been doing this for several years. This project has been ongoing for many years. And tonight really represents an important milestone, or this, the phase that we're going to be discussing with you tonight represents an important milestone in the overall cleanup process. So tonight's goal really from our perspective is we want to summarize the proposed cleanup work. We want to address questions. We want to leave ample time for questions. We realize there are several aspects that probably will result in questions. We want to listen to your thoughts about the cleanup work and also address any concerns that you may have so we can bring that into the process that we're currently involved in. And really, we want to outline the process that's going to be used to keep the city and the local community informed about this cleanup work. Jeremy and I will kind of tag-team during the presentation here. There's certain elements of the talk, tonight's talk that I'll defer over to Jeremy and he'll make the presentation. So with that, let's go ahead and begin. Next slide, please. Or do I have complete control?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we wanted to start just by briefly touching upon a little bit of the site history and a brief overview of the Model Toxic Control Act process. That's the state's cleanup regulations that we use to do cleanup throughout the state. But first, let's just take a look at the site. For those that are familiar with the site, we're up in northeast Pasco here, about a 200-acre site. We have various waste disposal areas on the site. And I'll highlight really two main areas. Some are municipal solid waste areas, the largest of which is the area here referred to as municipal solid waste landfill area. We have other areas. One is referred to as the bale fill area, where baled waste was disposed for a period of time. And we have a series of burn trenches that also constitutes municipal solid waste. In addition to the municipal solid waste, we also have a series of industrial waste disposal areas referred to generally as Zones A, B, C, D, and E. And those are located here. Zone A, we'll be concentrating much of our discussion tonight on this area. This is the area where folks have probably heard we're going to be doing a drum removal action. That's the proposed action. So we'll talk a lot about Zone A tonight. But we also have other areas at the facility, Zone C, D, Zone E, and then also Zone B. Zone B is somewhat of a separate category. We'll talk about that separately. Brief history, municipal waste was brought into the site starting in the late 1950s. I highlighted the various areas, the mini-waste area, burn trenches, whatnot. Waste disposal activities went on until the early 1990s. Industrial wastes, the waste disposal history there is much more constrained. It was only over a few-year period from in the early 1970s. And in those areas, again, the four zones, Zone A, B, C, and D. Zone A received approximately 35,000 drums of various types of industrial, mixed and various types of industrial waste. Zone B was where herbicide manufacturing waste were isolated. There were approximately 5,000 drums that were placed in that area. Zone C and D is where various types of sludges and resins were brought in, usually in large tanker trucks, and placed into an evaporation pond setting. And Zone E is where pulp and paper manufacturing waste, referred to as chloralkali waste, was brought into the site, about 11,000 tons. As a collective outcome of the waste disposal activities, groundwater contamination did occur beneath the site, and that contamination did migrate southward toward the Columbia River. So we have had in the past evidence of an off-site plume. And we'll talk more about this to give better context about it. But I just wanted to highlight the fact that there is still groundwater contamination at the site, but largely areas where we have contamination above cleanup levels is exclusively within the landfill property and not really in the offsite areas. Briefly, the, again, the timeline for the Pasco landfill sites, landfill sites starting in the late 1950s, we have a long waste disposal history, went up until about 1993. And then a couple of points worth highlighting here. The groundwater impacts were first noted at the site in the mid-1980s. EPA did some follow-up assessment work, and that resulted in the site being nominated as a national priorities list site. So the worst sites in the country received that NPL designation. Ecology took ownership, if you will, or primary responsibility for guiding the cleanup work in the early 1990s. A series of various investigations and studies were conducted up through the end of the 1990s. And really kind of fast-forwarding a high-grading to where we are today, a couple of activities that are worth noting. In 2017, there was concern about elevated temperatures beneath this drum area referred to as Zone A. That led to some investigation work, which was referred to as the Zone A combustion study. That work really kind of spearheaded then movement into what's referred to as a focused feasibility study. That's a study that's used to isolate and highlight, identify appropriate remedial alternatives that would then be evaluated and used to select a final remedy. And then where we're at today is in the development of a cleanup action plan. Ecology has prepared a document referred to as a cleanup action plan, and that provides Ecology's recommended cleanup solution, cleanup remedy for this site. So in brief, we've moved from the FFS, or the focused feasibility study. Again, the purpose of that was to identify and evaluate technical approaches and overall costs associated with different type of cleanup solutions for the site. We had a public comment period in the fall of 2018. We received input from the community. And based on that input from the community, along with our review of the information, we came out with a responsive summary that described the overall outcome from information received from the community. That information was then fed into the next step of the process, the cleanup action plan, which Ecology provided its preferred cleanup remedy in that document. And really, Ecology used the recommended preferred remedies that the potentially liable persons, the PLP groups provided, with the exception of one location, which was Zone A. The remedy that was proposed in the FFS for Zone A, Ecology did not believe met the requisite requirements, and I'll talk briefly about those in a subsequent slide. And Ecology used a different approach that we felt was more appropriate for the final cleanup for Zone A. So there's a little departure there from what the FFS had made recommendations on. We are in the middle of a public comment, public review period right now. Last week, we had a meeting at Virgie Robinson where we invited the public to come to the meeting. We provided a presentation similar to what you'll hear tonight that laid out those various recommended actions for the cleanup. And briefly, where are we at right now in the process is there is preliminary work going on, looking at what's referred to as an engineering design report. The cleanup action plan identified a preferred remedy. The PLPs are actively working to develop and flesh out various types of planning documents that will support that work. We're anticipating that construction will begin in this project by 2020. So we have a lot of planning yet to do. We'll highlight some of that here tonight for you. So again, in brief, the Matka cleanup process is a multi-step process. But one important aspect is the selection of a cleanup remedy. And that selection process has to go through various criteria that have to be met, one of which is referred to as threshold requirements. There was a simply protection of human health and the environment, a very important element of any cleanup. You have to comply with existing cleanup standards and standards that are set specific to this site. To comply with various state and federal laws, referred to ARRs or applicable and relevant regulations. And it has to be able to provide for compliance monitoring. But in addition to that, there are some other requirements that Matka does call out. One is to, where possible, use permanent remedies to the fullest extent possible when selecting a final remedy. We want a cleanup solution that will withstand the test of time, if you will. So we want it to be as permanent as possible. We also want to make sure that as we're doing the cleanup and as we're striving toward establishing cleanup levels, that that can be done in as expedited of a fashion as possible. So we want a minimal or reasonable restoration time. So we want a minimal or reasonable restoration timeframe, that's another one of the important significant requirements. And then, of course, is considering public concern at large, and again, we want to hear from the city and from the community, and we've been getting good input so far in this process. So I'll highlight a few common cleanup elements that are going to be identified for all of the various remedies at the site, all these various cleanup areas will have some common elements, and we'll touch upon a few of those. One of those includes the use of protective covers. In some instances, those will be simply soil type cover, three feet or more thick placed over the waste areas to provide buffering and prevent human health exposure and exposure to, you know, various critters that might try to burrow in, so we have that in place. But protective covers can also mean a very more highly engineered, multi-layered type of system, which are referred to as a RECA type of a cap and cover system. We already have those in place at several of the waste disposal areas, specifically the zones A, B, C, D, and E. Another component that's common among all of the cleanup actions will be the use of routine inspections, maintenance, monitoring, again, we're looking at this from the long-term perspective, so there'll have to be assurances that the remedy that's selected and put in place is maintained and kept in place for a long period of time. We also utilize institutional controls, those include things such as environmental covenants or restrictions on various types of uses and activities at the site that prevent disturbances to those areas where we know we have wastes or contaminants that are present. Various types of access control, such as fencing or signage, those are already in place, but some of those will be even amplified as we move into the final remedy that's selected. Various financial assurance mechanisms, these could be letters of credit, other types of mechanisms, to ensure that we always have in place sufficient funding so that the PLPs are ensuring that their obligations are met throughout the course and throughout the timeframe that the cleanup activities will have to occur over. And then, the process that we use to evaluate the overall remedy effectiveness and the integrity of these various types of cleanup options are periodic reviews, or five-year reviews, and that will be the important step that will allow us to, on a regular basis, evaluate just how well this remedy is performing overall. Briefly, this is a diagram and some photos showing just what does this more highly protective, multi-layered, RECA cover system consist of. At the very bottom, we have over the waste, several feet of soil typically, and above that, we'll have what's called a GCL, it's referred to as a geosynthetic clay liner, very thin layer of clay that's placed down over the, over the soil zone. Above that, we'll have a plastic type or a HDPE, High Density Polyethylene membrane, plastic membrane, to provide low permeability cover over the top of the GCL layer, of a drainage layer to support migration of any percolating precipitation waters that might move down through the cap. Above that, we'll have a plastic geotextile just to keep the various soil layers separated out. The top soil layer, in these areas, will typically have a vegetative cover, so we want to encourage some type of vegetation growth on top of it, that enhances evapotranspiration. We're in a low precipitation area of the state, but we want to minimize the amount of water infiltration that potentially can occur, that's a problem when we're talking about contamination, we want to minimize that potential for any water interactions with our wastes or, or materials that are in the, in the underground. So that type of a system is present at Zone A, Zone B, Zone C, D, and E, all the industrial waste areas have a type of a system similar to this that you see here in this diagram. There's also a similar type of system in place at the municipal solid waste landfill. With that, I'm going to transition over to Jeremy Schmidt, he'll walk us through some of the individual alternatives for the specific zones.
Mr. Martinez has a question.
Just a quick question, Zone B has been cleaned up, or had the drums have been taken away of herbicides? Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So in 2002, a drum removal action was completed at Zone B, those drums were all removed, a temporary cover system was placed over Zone B. In 2013, the potentially liable persons approached Ecology, actually before 2013, but they were petitioning to install a more protective cover over that area. The drums had been removed, a little bit of soil contamination, residual soil contamination had been removed, but they had requested the idea of putting in a more protective cover, similar to what we saw that I just showed in those diagrams. So in 2013, that type of a cover system was placed over the entirety of Zone B and used to provide another level of protection.
Thank you. Thank you. So first, we'll cover the preferred remedy or the proposed remedy at the municipal solid waste landfill. This was that large 40 acre site that accepted garbage basically for about 30 years. Cleaning up and, and managing these sites is a very standard process. First, the engineered cover system that you saw on the previous slides is installed out there and is functioning properly, that will continue to be maintained. The other major issue with an MSW landfill is the generation of methane gas. That gas needs to be collected and then burned off, and that's what's occurring in the picture there, there's a flare where we burn the gas off. So ultimately, the cover, collecting the gas, long-term monitoring and groundwater monitoring is the proposed remedy for the municipal solid waste landfill.
This is a tip, this is not atypical for landfills.
No, this is, this is very typical, yeah, absolutely. Chuck had also mentioned that there is a bale fill area where basically garbage was baled up just like a hay bale, and then that way they can stack it in a little bit tighter. Currently, the plan is, as proposed, is to repair the soil cover, as you can see in some places, the waste is exposed because of wind erosion. The plan is to improve the existing soil cover and ensure that that soil cover is three feet thick, and then monitor that soil cover over time. This particular site does, area of the site is not a source of either methane that we can measure, or is it a source of groundwater contamination. So I'm skipping through some of the more, the more completed areas of the site because I really think we want to get to Zone A.
That's a great.
Yep, absolutely. There are some burn trenches that will be, that where a long time ago garbage was burned, dumped into a trench all week and then lit on fire on Fridays, and it would burn through the weekend, same, same type of deal as the last. It'll, will ensure that the soil covers are approximately three feet thick and monitor the cover systems for, over time. Again, no source of groundwater contamination here. Now, so those were the municipals, I'll move to the industrial waste areas. So starting with Zone B, I think we covered this. The only addition that I would add to what Chuck mentioned is that earlier this year or late last year, the PLPs that are responsible for this particular zone requested to sever themselves from the rest of the site, which Ecology granted. So the proposed, the cleanup action plan that's out for public review right now does not include Zone B. Zone B will have its own cleanup action plan and legal agreement associated with it. That being said, the presumptive remedy at this location is already in place, the drums have been removed, and there's a RECA long-term cover system installed. They will still continue, need to do groundwater monitoring and verify that the cover is functioning properly. Zone C, D, also a waste disposal area, but it wasn't drummed, it was came in in liquid form. The proposed remedy at this area is, again, to maintain that cover system that you saw as well as monitor groundwater and the cover system for integrity over time. This does not appear to be any substantial source of contamination to groundwater. Zone E, it's the exact same proposed remedy, cover system, groundwater monitoring. There is some low-detection contaminated groundwater, and what I mean by is, there is groundwater with low levels of contamination in the central area part of the site, they could be coming from E or C, D, or the old burn trenches, or, or, or other things that may have occurred at the landfill, just to ensure that, that we can cover any response to this area if the need arises in the future. We have a contingent proposed remedy in here. Basically, it says that if we detect contaminants in groundwater, basically in the red circle, that without having to reopen a legal agreement, it's already in the contract, we can go investigate it and do additional targeted cleanup if necessary. So in order to pull that out, we have called it its own little area. And I'll move on to Zone A, I'll cover a little bit of it. As Chuck mentioned, there's 35,000 to 40,000 drums in Zone A, mixed solvents, paints, sludges, pretty much almost every detected type of contaminant that we look for is located in Zone A. The proposed remedy is to excavate all of the drums and any drum-related wastes, and what that means is, the material that may have spilled out of a drum, the proposal is to excavate all that, isolate it, characterize it, and transport it offsite for disposal. There's an existing SVE system, Soil Vapor Extraction System, that is, that is sucking the gases that are emanating from this area out of the ground, it's, it's a, it's basically part of the interim actions that we've been working on for the last 20 years. And that system will continue to operate to ensure that we don't have fugitive emissions from the site, and Chuck will go much further into the safety of the operation. So once the drums are out and the site is backfilled, there's still contaminated soil below the drums, about 30 to 40 feet before you reach groundwater. At that point, in situ thermal treatment will be employed, basically you heat the soil, and then all of the contaminants that are in that soil volatilize, and it's easy to extract them from the ground at that point. We are going to do that to a point at which the contamination, there will be some very low-level residual contamination that remains, but we will do that to the point at which it cannot impact groundwater in the future. Lastly, a new engineered cover, the same RECA cover that you saw on the previous slides will be installed as a, basically a belt and suspenders, ensure that we do not have issues with this particular location anymore. Groundwater monitoring will occur, and of course, the fencing and the signage will continue. And from here, I'll let Chuck finish it out.
Thank you, Jeremy. So next few slides will lay out kind of the proposed construction approach that the responsible parties have proposed to complete this Zone A drum excavation work and then subsequent phase. Really, this diagram is a, kind of provides a depiction of, of various locations that will be used to support this overall cleanup work. Again, we're down here in the red circle, this is Zone A. The greenish box here is the footprint of a temporary structure that's going to be used during the work to provide containment around the active zone where the drums will be removed. We're only going to have a limited area that would be exposed at any given time, but it was agreed that having the work done undercover provides a lot of advantages, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of the specific advantages in a subsequent slide, but for right now, I'll just move on and say that to support the activities then that are occurring within Zone A proper, we'll have other areas that will be necessary, we'll have areas where roll-off drums will be used to, roll-off boxes will be used for situations where, as we're excavating and removing the waste, we may determine that the drums are simply not in an intact condition, they're corroded, they're degraded, and we have to take them out more or less in bulk. So that material will be placed into large type roll-off, waste roll-off boxes, and those would be placed into this area for temporary storage after they had been characterized, evaluated, segregated in the active work area within the tented containment structure. Now, for those wastes that are still intact in drums, the proposal would be to take those drums and place them into what's called overpacks. So a 55 gallon drum would be placed into like an 85 gallon overpack drum, and then that would provide containment, it would provide security from other emissions that might be coming off that drum, so that there can be then subsequent testing, analysis, and evaluation work done with the safety of having those individual drums contained. That area would be proposed currently up in the area close to where the landfill operations building is located. What other, other areas at the site used for different types of facility support, trailers, the operations center, and whatnot? Any questions on the layout, proposed layout? So I mentioned...
Right, right, if you would, I think there's going to be a lot of sophisticated process to get to a point, cleaning it up and the waste that's there moved to another place, and that's going to be the bulk of this operation. I think you could probably skip just a little bit towards the end of that part.
Yeah, I could highlight that when the drums are removed, there will be a phase of characterization work done to ensure that we understand what is in any particular drum, what is in any particular scoop if their drums are not intact. That work will be performed inside of the containment unit, all that work will be done as mechanically as possible. In other words, the, we want to minimize the amount of physical contact with workers in that active work, workspace. The work will be done in supplied air, we call Zone B, our Level B type of, of air protection. The structure also will be under vacuum the whole time, so there'll be a negative pressure that's maintained on that, on that structure so that there are not emissions, or there's not gaseous type of emanations that could come up from the active work area and then get out into the environment. There'll be various types of negative pressure applied and treatment units that'll be associated with that structure, I'll highlight that a little more in the next slide. The decision was made to use a type of temporary structure such as this, this may not be the exact design, but again, we're going to have to cover a fairly large footprint. The, the current plan will include installation of a, a structure that's approximately 150 by 200 feet in dimension, and that's intended so that we can do four separate movements of the structure over the entire Zone A area, and I'll have another slide that depicts that a little bit better. But the, the goal here is to have rapid setup, we want to get the system set up so we can begin the active work. It'll completely cover that excavation area, the area where we're going to have an open face where the drums will be exposed. As I mentioned, it's going to be operated under negative pressure, and that will also include a GAC or Granular Activated Carbon type of a treatment system to make sure that any air that's being passed through the structure and then emitted has already gone through some type of a volatile polishing step. It provides a great deal of protection from the elements, so year-round work, we can have a lot more climate control within that area. Workers inside will be using supplied air, and the whole intent here is to minimize the possibility for any type of work-related emissions into the environment. I mentioned four different positionings are envisioned right now by having a structure that's approximately 150 by 200. Position one would start here at the northwest corner. We would then do the work in that area and then move progressively into position two, onto three, and then onto four. You note that position four, we have to reorient the structure 90 degrees to what the other positions are in order to kind of cover the, the shape of Zone A, which is a little bit, it's not quite rectangular, so we're doing a little bit of reorientation in that. A couple important items to highlight, there'll be complete overlap, the intent is to have overlap so that as we're doing one area, we're excavating it, as we move to the next area, we're not leaving any gaps, we're minimizing any potential gaps between those work areas. The consequence of the work means there'll have to be some setback or layback areas on the edges, and special provisions will be made to make sure that we go back and cover any areas where, if the work that's done undercover can't be complete, that we come back and fill those areas in, and we'll do it safely, and we have a plan in place to do that. One other element I want to highlight here, the blue circles are areas for air monitoring.
I'm going to renew the point, I'm going to ask you to accelerate a bit, in a little bit less, less detail and cut a little bit more towards the safe removal of all of this.
Sure, thank you. Air monitoring activities will be occurring throughout the area, and we'll have that as a continuous type of air monitoring process. Cross-section showing here the position of the structure setup over the drums, and the work would be occurring in this area to get those drums removed from the ground beneath this engineered structure. This would show a position number two, for example, we've already removed the drums here, and that area's already been covered and completed, so the drum removal actions are finished in that area. Jeremy indicated that following the drum removal action, a separate phase of work will be done called in situ thermal treatment. That will involve the use of electrodes in the ground, heating up the soil, driving off those organic compounds that are volatile, those will be captured with various vapor monitoring and collection wells, and those will be treated at a vapor treatment unit that would be applied with the overall technology that's involved here. Briefly, the offsite groundwater monitoring plume that I, groundwater plume that I referenced earlier, historically extended from the site boundaries, mile and a half to the south. We're not seeing evidence of contamination in the offsite groundwater plume that are above our cleanup levels, but they are still detectable. And to cut to the chase, really, Ecology will maintain, it would recommend maintaining the current groundwater protection area until completion of all the existing cleanup work is done. Sometimes we'll have short-term changes in groundwater quality due to the disturbances that occur on site, we want to make sure we're through that phase, we have active monitoring... We have active monitoring for five or 10 years afterward before we make any decision to perhaps remove in the entirety of the groundwater protection area.
And actually, I would like to pause on this one because I think this does directly intersect City of Pasco, too. So, I'm just saying, make sure I summarize correctly, too. It sounds as if the plume is still there, still detectable. It doesn't sound like it's getting any worse. We have various controls, meaning we ask people not to go drill wells in that area to go get water and use city water, which is from a different source, as an example. And that plan is working for this. And the idea, too, is that eventually, what is this plume, is this going to go away or is this going to be extracted by evaporation? Or what's the mechanism for resolving this?
So, we've seen significant declines in contaminant concentrations as we've implemented, we call interim action cleanups. That's the work that's ongoing right now. The anticipation is that as we complete the final remedies here, we'll continue to see those concentrations decline even further over time. And eventually, they'll be at non-detect levels is what our expectation is.
It's believed the monitoring that they're going to go under their own accord.
Yeah, and there's an extensive monitoring network that's present out in this area involving both residential as well as installed monitoring wells. We'll continue to use those to gauge those changes in concentration over time. But the anticipation is that these concentrations will continue to decline. And as we see a steady maintenance of concentrations well below those cleanup levels, at that time, ecology would then make a petition to eliminate that groundwater protection area, the need for it. And work with the city and Benton Franklin Health District to ensure that that's done at the right time.
Thanks for the drill down to that. Mr. Question, Mr. Alvarado?
And those restrictions where, you know, digging wells or things like that in residential areas, what would the restrictions to residential area would be?
Yeah, currently, that whole entire area within the GPA restricts any use of new wells. So, there's no wells that can be drilled. That area is part of the, I know the service district where city water is being provided. And that restriction would continue. There would be a limitation on that. Once the groundwater protection area is removed, then it would be really up to, I think, local decision-making here at the local level.
Was that the main restriction or any other uses of, perhaps, any impact to some gardening or something like that? I think that'll probably be the question.
Definitely, irrigation-type uses could be allowed, yes.
But that's not currently a restriction as far as-
Currently, there is no domestic-
Deep groundwater is what we're talking about, correct?
We're talking about groundwater in the first encountered aquifer system. That water cannot be used by well owners. There is some limited use for irrigation purposes only, but by and large, there is no use for consumptive use.
Thank you.
Touch briefly upon emergency planning. I'll move through this quickly. The current process will involve development of an extensive number of various types of planning documents, health and safety plans or monitoring plans. I've alluded to some of these, waste handling and characterization. I touched upon waste acceptability plan. Contingency planning and emergency response is also a very important element. And there's been some dialogue and discussions that have already been initiated between the potentially liable persons and various representatives in the community, including City Walla Walla, Pasco, Fire District Number Three. Conversation has begun, and that's important, and that will continue to build out. Those plans will be continued to gain more clarity and have more detail and specificity placed in them. Again, this is just simply a reiteration of what comes out of the National Response Team identifying the importance of local community involvement in this overall process of emergency planning. Again, broad participation by a variety of players here in the local community. And we'll be interfacing with all of them. Ecology and the PLPs will and have begun communications on the development of these various plans, and we'll continue that over the next several months so that these planning documents meet the expectations of the community and provide the level of public health, safety, and assurance that we need to have in place to do this work safely. So, we're going to respond to the comments that we received during this 30-day period. We'll consider all that input. Any input may and could affect the current proposed activities. If that's done, then we may have to have another comment period if those are substantial changes. And if everything goes on the current plan, we would anticipate beginning the drum removal work as early as 2020.
Mr. Alvarado?
I'm just curious what the response from the public has been as far as participation?
We've had limited comments that have come in so far from the public. Our public review period will go out through October 3rd. We received a variety of comments and questions during our public review meeting that we had last week. It touched upon the full gamut of questions that council's already asked.
Would you consider that a decent amount of participation as far as that number of people who came to these meetings?
We had approximately 2025 representatives from the community that participated in that last meeting. So, the next steps, we're working toward the signing of either a consent decree or an enforcement order. Depends on what the PLPs choose is the best path for them. The signing of that will be occurring probably over the next month to month and a half. I mentioned that we're in the midst of developing engineering design reports that cover the spectrum of the work that will be performed specific to the drum removal. There will be another engineering design report process for that in-situ thermal work that I also mentioned. Once the PLPs finalize their contract and with the cleanup contractors, vendors, and suppliers, then again, we can initiate the work and get that going. And we plan to certainly continue throughout this process our close coordination with local agencies, public health agencies. We want your input, and we want your involvement at every step of the way. Project contacts and any other questions you may have?
Well, first of all, you mentioned there still is, the opportunity to comment is still open specifically. Would this be contact information people can share? Or is there certain website or web page that people should go to?
We do have a webpage and/or you can submit comments directly to me via email contact. We do have a Pasco landfill website that I can make available. Don't have the link here, but there's also a way to directly insert your comments into the process through a web-based interactive form.
At State Ecology website, then, if they did, Department of Ecology, Pasco Landfill, they probably would Google and find, and then be able to find a link to-
Find a link to that, yes. And we've already received some comments via that avenue already. And then, yeah, we'll, again, take those comments received, wrap it up by the October 3rd, and then we'll move toward the responsiveness summary. And we'll let folks know if there's anything that has changed the current plan.
And also, I think the metaphor or comparison, too, this is a marathon event. Ecology is an estate that is making sure that this is cleaned up for the longer term and that even when, this is a significant event, removing these barrels, this is a very large thing. This is going to be in a better posture to get to a state that things are cleaned up. But it's still going to take some time. This is a pretty significant site, is the way I understand it.
We're looking at about a year and a half to do the drum removal work. We're probably looking at a similar timeframe to complete the in-situ thermal treatment work. We'll put a cap system down after we do the in-situ thermal. So, we're looking anywhere from three to five years to bring this current plan into full execution and completion.
Appreciate the context. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation. I'd say that I've been following this to some extent through my role in the Franklin County Emergency Management Board. And one of the things that I would like to point out is that this is a very protective sort of remedy. There's remedies that are certainly less strenuous than removal of all the source materials. So, I feel very comfortable that what we're doing here is towards the full extent of what can be done to treat the site, and I appreciate that very much. I think this will hopefully help our city stay safe from this, the choice to be made in the past.
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
Any other comments? Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. I know that, I'm thinking it might have been you. It's been probably six or eight or 10 years you gave an update. And I would imagine you or Ecology probably give another update in six or 10 years. And great to see Ecology here, know that there's a lot of technological things that help. And I think also, probably a lot of us are familiar because a lot of those technologies are also employed at Hanford, where a lot of us tend to also have day jobs, too. So, good to see some crossover in technology.
No, we, again, appreciate this opportunity, and we look forward to coming before council and sharing updates and progress as we proceed, so.
Thank you. With that, workshops are information-full. We have, we've gone through A and B. And we're going to go ahead and proceed on to Item C related to presentation of affordable housing efforts and options. And I believe we're going to go straight to Mr. Jacob Gonzalez. Good to see you, sir.
Hey, thank you for having me up here. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's presentation will introduce some recent state legislation along with current city and regional efforts aimed at providing solutions for affordable housing. And here's the presentation here. Numerous bills were passed this past summer through the legislation. We mentioned most of those in the staff report that was shared with council. However, for the presentation tonight, we focused on two of those, House Bill 1406 and House Bill 1923 that have the most relevancy towards what we're doing here today in Pasco, also because those have some deadlines associated with them that require city action. This slide right here just shares some general information about the housing shortage here in the state of Washington. 164,000, 164,000 affordable housing units short here in the state, over 234,000 extremely to low-income households. Those households, about 40% are in the labor force, 28% are seniors, 24% are those with disabilities. So, that's kind of a really quick snapshot of what's going on across the state. Locally, or not locally, but county-wise, this chart shows you the severely cost-burdened households in the state of Washington. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines severely cost-burdened as those spending 50% or more of their income on housing. So, this isn't the entire state, but it's the majority of the counties here. So, just kind of another snapshot of what's going on across the state. You can see some of them are up near 23%, 24% of their households, hitting that 50% or more of their income on housing. Franklin County's towards the bottom, that's a good thing, we're around 11%. Slightly below Benton County, slightly below Yakima, much less than Spokane and King County's much larger populations. This chart is a little bit more, this is a city level, but this uses a different metric. I see this one used a little bit more often. It's just cost-burdened, so 30% or more of your household income allocated towards housing costs. This one's also broken down by owner-occupied housing units and renter-occupied housing units. So, it gives us a little bit more of a clear picture of who exactly is facing these challenges. So, you can see Pasco, about 22% of our renter households are cost-burdened, slightly lower, 19% for owner-occupied housing units. That's less renters as cost-burdened than Kennewick and Richland. However, higher number of owner-occupied housing units as cost-burdened. Let's see, 74% of our housing units are single-family dwelling units. So, that's kind of an interesting statistic, and that could probably be broken down even further by geographic area and so forth. This looks like, sorry. I think a slide was cut out, so my apologies. The next slide you were supposed to see has information. I'm sorry about that. Here you go. I got scared for a little bit. These are just a small list of some of the resources that are available here locally and regionally, available for the community in need of housing support. The Housing Authority of Pasco and Franklin County offers numerous programs, down payment assistance, and so forth, and also manages quite a bit of property, in, I think, 280 units within the city. The Tri-Cities Home Consortium is a collaboration with the City of Kennewick and the City of Richland. They are in the process of updating their five-year housing action plan. There's quite a bit of information in that plan itself. And I believe it's going towards a hearing in October, so I would keep an eye on that. That plan actually dives much deeper into who in our community is experiencing housing challenges, not only demographically and age-wise, but what kind of challenges, whether it's plumbing, internet access. It goes through the gauntlet, and it's very valuable information that, at the end of it, recommends strategies and tools for the region here. The Benton Franklin Community Action Committee is another resource along with the Benton and Franklin Counties Department of Human Services. And I do have a guest here from them that may be able to answer some questions later on the presentation if council wishes so. And, maybe go again, a little bit more of a... So, what's gone on at the local level? We've made multiple amendments over the past few months that council may remember to alleviate or at least allow for more housing to be created here in the City of Pasco. You may remember the Sheriff's Frontage Ordinance that was passed not too long ago. We've already seen folks try to come to the counter and utilize that, so that's been working for us. The Minimum Lot Size Ordinance that was recently adopted by council also had a decrease in frontages. We've seen folks take advantage of that, and that just passed. Building Height Ordinance, slightly increase the height would allow for more units to be built. And something that you'll probably see in early 2020 is a revision to the Plan Unit Development Ordinance for the City of Pasco. Right now, the minimum site area required is 10 acres. 10 acres is hard to come by in the city, so we're working on decreasing that substantially to allow folks to take advantage of that tool. Those, along with the programs and resources identified in the prior slide, are efforts for us to do what we can to alleviate the housing shortages, at least in our community. House Bill 1406 and House Bill 1923, those obviously were passed this summer, and they offer quite a bit of information. There's a lot within each. House Bill 1406 was a sales tax revenue-sharing program that allows cities and counties to access a portion of the state's sales tax revenue to make local investments in affordable housing. And also, House Bill 1923, which is an incentive program to increase residential densities in cities. With 1923, there's a list of 12 potential options that cities are allowed to choose if they'd like to move forward with any of them. Some of them are not applicable to the City of Pasco, some may be. I think the options for 1923 could use some more staff analysis to determine how that actually would be implemented for us. But with that, there is an opportunity for a grant application through the Department of Commerce to help assist with the development of policies to address housing shortages or housing density within the cities. I would like to bring up Kyle Sullivan, an administrator with the Human Services Department of Benton and Franklin County, who's got a lot of information and a wealth of knowledge on House Bill 1406 and also some recent conversations and discussions that have happened with some jurisdictions here. If council's okay with that, then Kyle, would you mind coming up?
And stick around, too. We might have some questions for you.
All right.
Thanks. Good evening, sir.
Thanks for having me here. Jacob and I had had a discussion, I think it was either early last week or the end of the week before, about substitute House Bill 1406. And I think it's important for everyone to understand it's not a new tax. It's just sharing a portion of the local sales tax. The state's identified affordable housing as a significant issue statewide. And so, this was their way of allowing local governments a little bit more control over how that money is spent. And so, the breakdown, there's a total percentage of a .0146 that depending on several different scenarios, whether the cities were to initiate a qualifying local tax, that's getting the portion of the 1406 money is shared between the county and the city. There are four qualifying local taxes that would be a new tax that local governments, city governments have an option of initiating. And then they would receive the full tax share of the House Bill 1406. In lieu of initiating a qualifying local tax, the bill allows for that split between the county and cities to be, inter-local agreements can be entered into, there can be adjoining of the funds, and, you know, essentially combining the money to look at bigger projects, similar to what we do with our document recording fees, the Affordable Housing Fund, where we've got a steering committee that's got representation from the cities and the county that directs how that funding is spent. You know, and I don't know how deep in the weeds you want me to go. There's really a lot of information, most certainly, maybe let you guys ask questions. The one thing I do want to make sure and let you guys know, I presented this to the Franklin County Commissioners last Tuesday because they're, like Jacob had indicated, there are timeframes that have to be met to be eligible for the funding. Uh, so I had a presentation with the county commissioners, um, and, and, uh, they had chose to sign, uh, the Resolution of Intent, which is a requirement that, uh, counties and cities enter into by January thirty-first of twenty-twenty, uh, to be eligible, uh, for the program. Uh, and, and, uh, the, if, if the city of Pasco is, is intending on, on pursuing that, then again, they would just have to issue, uh, the, the Resolution of Intent. And then by, uh, I think it's July, the end of July twenty-twenty, uh, there has to be a tax ordinance, uh, adopted. And so I, again, like I said, I don't know, uh, uh, you know, how detailed you'd like me to go. If I can keep going, or if you'd like to ask questions, then I'm good with that.
Yeah, and just so, and just so I understand, because this is new to me and, and I've just other than reading through the report. So fourteen oh six is done. It has been passed. It is law in the state.
Went into effect the end of July this year.
Okay, and it, and it is a mechanism to, uh, potentially increase sales tax locally. And it seems like there's a shared match that if local jurisdictions enact a portion of it, uh, the state would match another portion of it.
Well, there's, uh, the, the city is eligible to participate in the program whether they issue a new tax or not.
Okay.
Um, i- if they choose not to, i- if they, there are four what are called qualifying local taxes. If the city chooses to enact one of those, again, that would be a new tax. And they would be eligible to receive the county's portion of House Bill, Substitute House Bill fourteen oh six, which would be the equivalent of a, of a point zero one four six.
So that's, that's on the table without us specifically going through an exercise to where we need to authorize a, a, a new tax?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in, in the event that you, that the city does not initiate a qualifying local tax, uh, because Benton, uh, Franklin County has, has signed the Resolution, Resolution of Intent intend to, to, to move forward with, uh, with this, this program. Uh, the county and the city would split the, and so they would be eligible for a point zero zero seven three, which would be the equivalent of about a, it's, based off the twenty-eighteen numbers, around a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Again, to be clear, what they're talking about then is going after the stuff that does not require specific approval.
Correct.
And, 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 and so they've done that portion of it.
They have done that.
Okay. Thank, that, that was the question I had. Mr. Uh...
Very similar, so I'll go proceed.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you. So what I understood in that was that, um, so the county can, if we do nothing, the county will get the full amount of the tax available, and it's just a portion of the sales tax being collected by the state redirected back to the county.
Correct.
So then that would be administered by the county if the city takes no action.
Correct.
We take the minimal action, then we, we split that in half. We have control over half of it. Half of it is controlled by the county. And if we were to, and adopt one of the four, four additional tax resolutions, which, um, I believe all or most of them require a vote of the people.
Yes.
Um, then we would get the full amount of the, um, sales tax portion back from fourteen oh six.
Correct.
Okay. And you, and you said that counties already, uh, already adopted it. So if we were to pass, um, a Resolution of Intent and later a, um, adopt an ordinance by the end of July, then we would get half of that without any further taxes needed to be imposed on our people.
Correct.
Excellent. I think that's the questions I had for, uh, for you. Um, I might have some questions for staff regarding this, but...
Okay, and, and again, one, one thing that I did, I, I spoke with, uh, the commissioners, uh, and talked with them about, uh, pooling funds. Uh, they are interested, or they are, uh, uh, interested in looking at, at if the city of Pasco chooses to initiate, uh, fourteen oh six, looking at an interlocal, uh, to, to pool our funding. And then again, kinda, I, I would envision, uh, the directing the fund similar to the, our, our twenty-sixty fund, where there's representation from the city, uh, from the county, from all the cities within the county, in the, in the county. Um, and, and, uh, there would be the steering committee that would, would direct how that funding would be.
We've got some models and resources and programs that this potentially could be used in the same, same, same way.
Correct.
Sure. Mr. Maloney, you still need the floor?
Yes, was, was there any more presentation of those I have related but divergent questions? So, um, I had questions, um, specifically regarding nineteen, uh, House Bill nineteen twenty-three. Um, so, me, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, you have some help with that. Um, if I'm understanding this correctly, the application is due, um, Monday, a week from today.
Yeah, there's, uh, the first deadline for the grant application is due Monday, Sep-, next Monday, September thirtieth. There is a secondary deadline of October fifteenth that would allow jurisdictions to still apply and potentially receive remaining funds of, from the Department of Commerce.
And so if I understood, um, reading the materials separately, it's provided through AWC, um, it goes up to a hundred thousand dollars worth of grant for planning, but only if we commit to implementing certain things. And I didn't understand those things.
Yeah, and, and we're still trying to understand exactly what would be the, the outcome. Um, I, I believe if, if your intent is to adopt two or more of those options, there's actually an opportunity to do more or to receive more than a hundred thousand if you can prove that you've got above circumstances that would benefit the, the city or the community. Um, but I'm not sure what happens if you intend to adopt any of the options, and they fall through either through public process or whatever it may be. Uh, we're still unclear about that, and we've reached out to Commerce and they're still waiting for a response on that one.
So at this point in time, given the fact that we don't have a council meeting next Monday, um, and what I'm thinking, I'm understanding for you is there's a lot of confusion on this. We're not intending, staff's not, not intending to apply by the end of this month.
I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think we've, we've done enough homework on our end to identify which of those options would be appropriate. But Rick, if you have anything that...
And Councilman Maloney, we'll be applying if, if council authorized it with the second round of, uh, applications by October fifteenth. So staff has responded to a survey through the Department of Commerce, uh, several weeks ago, I'm not, maybe three or four. And, um, we've, uh, identified a handful of things we may be interested in pursuing, which is all that they needed at that point. And so, uh, we will, uh, suggest after, uh, some study this week to bring an item back at the council's first meeting in October, which I think is the seventh, which will allow us to have enough time to submit by the October fifteenth deadline.
Okay, so if, uh, do we anticipate that there will indeed be money left? I believe they, um, earmarked five million dollars in the budget for this. Do we anticipate that there's likely to be?
Five million.
That there's likely to be additional funds left by that point?
I can, I can only guess. I, I don't know. Uh, I do know, though, that, um, I believe the grant, uh, awards will be measured on how much meaningful, uh, difference you can make with your intended actions. So I'm not sure how that's going to be scored or weighed, but, uh, you, we'll certainly find out.
Uh, last question I had on that was, um, what can that, what can that grant be, um, applied to? What, what, what can those funds be used for, for?
Uh, well, there's, there's twelve authorized actions in nineteen twenty-three that, and, and they range everywhere from, uh, transit-oriented development up to seventy-five or fifty to seventy-five acre, uh, units an acre, all the way down to something as simple as accessory dwelling units. So a, a whole variety of things, and I'll, I'll, I'll warn council, though many of these are not applicable here in Pasco. Uh, and some will potentially be, uh, difficult for the community to accept. Uh, but we think that we have two or three that we can, we can pursue, uh, depending on how the legislation works out here at the local level that can make a difference.
I'm sorry, just, uh, I'm, I'm not sure I got any full answer to my question there. Is, what, what can those funds that grant be used for? It's a one-time grant?
It would be used for the cod, the staff time and cost associated with preparing the ordinance revisions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
I think it's, uh, similar to, to, to the last question. And so, um, let's say we, we go all in and say we, we really do want, uh, to, uh, you know, receive these funds, take advantage of twenty years of funding that the state allocated towards, um, municipalities that are wanting to, uh, um, you know, really solve these issues in their communities. Do we have the mechanisms to spend these funds? Um, so do we have, uh, uh, quality affordable housing developers that would be able to use these funds? Or do we have, um, you know, just the, uh, ways to really spend these?
Uh, going back to fourteen oh six, y- yes, we, we do have ways. Uh, we, we have, uh, the block develop, uh, Down Payment Assistance Program through block grant, for example. There's rental, uh, subsidies and rehabilitations that we authorize through the, uh, Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Council approved, uh, work plan for just a few weeks ago. Uh, there's the Housing Authority as a potential partner. And of course, there's a model, as Mr. Sullivan mentioned, with, uh, two funds in particular, something called the twenty-sixty fund and the twenty-sixty-three fund. Those are, uh, funds that are, um, uh, revenues received through recording fees. And, and there's a, a two-county-wide, um, membership that, uh, authorizes release and approval of those funds for certain, uh, actions that, uh, help with affordable housing. So you, there's, there's no shortage of models to, to look at for guidance.
Perfect, yeah, I appreciate that. The, one of the worst things is getting money and then not being able to use it because we don't have the, the means. And so I appreciate hearing that.
More presentation? Okay, um, I, I have a sort of more general or question or opinion than Mr. White or yourself. I think there's a certain, a special keenness, uh, with, by this council in particular on the issue of homelessness. And what we're seeing is a lot of little, small programs that nibble away at that fundamental question we're challenged with nationally, statewide, and locally. And I think also in a backdrop that, uh, I'm certainly seeing, I think, more homeless people in our tri-city community. We as a city can provide these and should provide these programs, but there is still that need there. And I'm getting a sense that even if all of these little programs, relatively speaking, uh, are instituted and run as efficiently as possible, it's not going to fix the fundamental issue. What I, and, and I'm not sure that you have an answer, but i- am, am I imagining things? Is that, what, what, what do you think of the state of homelessness in the tri-cities? And that's, and, and I meant, and there's a trap. I'd, I'd, uh, be interested in your opinion.
Well, I, I think on the zoning side, I think there's more and more research that's come out academically and, and through actual implementation of new, uh, amendments to municipal zoning codes, where they're finding out, um, constraints within cities, our own municipal code, that make it difficult for housing to be constructed. And it's one thing if the market wants to build a three-story apartment building or five accessory dwelling units. And if the market thinks that's a great thing to do, then that'll happen. But if you don't allow it, then you, you cut it short from even happening. I know that, um, the city of Vancouver, Washington, and the city of Olympia, um, and even the city of Spokane have recently loosened up their regulations on accessory dwelling units, and, and city of Renton and Everett as well. Um, and they've seen, uh, an, an increase in ADU permits come through their counter. Um, so if we were to allow accessory dwelling units here in the city of Pasco, we make it zero, but at least we allow it, I think is one way to think about it. Um, I think anything we can do within the zoning code to allow for housing to be built, as long as it's done so in a safe manner with, um, consideration of, of other uses and neighborhoods and all that, then I think that's a great thing. And we're slowly going through that, as you've seen through the amendment process, through the municipal code.
And, and you, exactly, and the point, and I should have augmented, besides the programs the state and the feds come up with, I have seen very deliberately work on your part, and I think also the planning commission's part, uh, whi- which pieces of our codes could be modified for us to do our part in our community. And so you, it's, I get the impression that you have a sense of optimism that if we keep working on those things, it's the right thing the Pasco should be doing.
Absolutely, it's housing. People need a place to live.
Okay. I appreciate the thoughts. Any other thoughts? Uh, it's also true, too, that this is something that's going to be fixed overnight. We're going to have to keep working on it hard. And, uh, we appreciate the update and remembering, too, that there is a lot of dimensions to this. And I also appreciate, uh, presentation from another one of those agencies that are directly, uh, working with these things. And, uh, we'll, we'll keep working on them and appreciate your help.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we're about an hour and a half in, and we got two significant things plus a little bit of an executive session. I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break. Uh, let's restart here at eight-thirty, which is about six minutes from now. And we are back from a break, and we're going to continue on with our agenda. We're going to go to item four D. D two thousand nineteen annual street preservation program. Mr. Worley, is that to you to start out?
Yes, uh we wanted to, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we are wanting to share with you some information about our. Twenty nineteen pavement preservation program and our uh public works superintendent John Mian is here to describe for you. Uh our program this year, so with that I'll turn it over to John.
And I have forty-five minutes, right?
I love when you come, you're you're a funny guy.
Um I'm very happy to pl- uh present to you the um end results of our pavement preservation program for two thousand nineteen. As you're aware, in two thousand eighteen, we uh we tried something different, we using overlay funds to um. To uh fund um street and or local street preservation. Um and we we worked on East B Circle and um. Using the success and lessons learned from that um effort, we. We we took those lessons learned and we uh. Uh re- resurfaced and rehabilitated many local streets around the city and and so I'm happy here to to be here to show you. Uh the results of what we did and and um answer any questions that you might have.
This is a recurring. I have the magic button on up here.
So Twentieth Avenue Overlay was a project facilitated, coordinated, managed by our engineering department. Um and um as most of you are aware that. The section of street between um Court Street and the highway was pretty rough going um. I'm sure that. Some of our residents would would call you and 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 we too would receive calls about the potholes and and. Um so we're glad that it's it's done and and I and I hope that uh it meets the expectations of the public. So using overlay funds, um again, operations and using city staff operations. Did restoration rehabilitation on local s- uh streets across the city. Um we. We used uh input from staff, input from the public to determine where our efforts would be um expended and and. And uh and utilized. Um in total, as you can see, we used uh the the we put down twenty-one hundred ton of asphalt and. And most of it was again um. In an overlay, there was some reconstruction on Clark that that our crews had to perform. Um it was good experience and uh um. I I think the crews learned a lot while being out there. So if you're out and about and chances are that you haven't seen all of our effort, which is the point of what we were trying to do, we're trying to get to. Local streets that don't receive the attention that our tierials oftentimes receive. Um and I'm just gonna flip through these, if you have any questions, um feel free to ask.
Typically speaking, I mean, I see faded pavement, this is stuff that's probably fifteen, twenty-ish years old. The 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 stuff that is there before.
I I think uh.
Approximately.
Yes, that's right, or older in some cases or some cases where parts of the roadway didn't really get done correctly and came apart quicker than others and so. It's basically re- redoing the roads that needed it the most.
Eighteenth and Pearl is an example of that um. Half the road was completed at some point and the other half was still in a condition of. That it was after it was being ground up or after it was ground up. In many of our streets, actually all of the streets um had utilities and and uh whether valve can lids or or sewer lids that needed to be. That were previously in very poor condition and this provided us an opportunity to address those as well. And. I think I still have time when my.
Well, and I I think what what are the questions, so many years, I don't know how many times we have let contracts for overlays and. We'll do a portion of the city and spend X amount of dollars on them. Wh- what's the difference or what's the philosophy that having to do it or doing it in-house? Uh what's the advantages or and or disadvantages to do an in-house versus contracting it out?
I I think the first advantage is um ownership and we are. Um use utilizing city staff to um. Complete the work that um that they're capable of doing and we're doing it with with funds that we already have coming into the city. Um I don't know, Steve, do you wanna?
Yeah, I I would add to that, that uh there's an advantage in that uh by using our crews to do it, we can be much more mobile and much more flexible. Uh each winter has a different toll on our streets. And so uh we get the opportunity to be able to, after each winter, identify which streets need it and we can respond to that very quickly. The other issue is that uh we don't have to go through the process of putting a bid package together to put it out to bid. We can just identify the roads and use the experience and the skills of our crews to go out there and get that done right away.
And I think the mobility part is a big piece of it, we uh. As we were going through this effort, this pavement preservation effort, um even in the middle of it, we were still out. Is there anything local that we, anything within the um vicinity that we can that we can touch or hit on and make it a priority for the following year, so.
Where contractor is just doing. And your guys are might be gonna see something that really needs to be done.
And I I think uh having boots on the ground, no pun intended, is is uh almost invaluable, having the guys out there and and. Bring things to our attention, to management's attention that um. We may not have seen if we just went out there and said, okay, contractor, address this one specific area.
Mister uh Baloney and then Mister Martinez.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um thank you for the presentation, I I think this is a really important program and and you look at the condition of some of those streets and it is. They were they were bad, they're really bad, and so I really appreciate um those getting fixed up, it really isn't a quality of life issue. So what do these crews do when they're not doing this, are we're not having dedicated staff just for pavement preservation and doing this work? There there are city staff that we already have in-house that are doing other things the rest of their time, is that correct?
Uh that is correct, yes, and depending on the time of the year, um so we spend. A good portion of the time in the springtime crack sealing or fixing potholes from the previous winter. Um we are striping out currently right now um. We. Signs, traffic signs, and uh we we uh seal coated Keys Stadium, I don't know if you've been to the stadium recently, we we. Put a new uh surface on top of that or on in the parking lot um. Uh and that's only on the uh on the traffic side, on the water side, of course, we have tons of services with the new construction going in. Um we have on the irrigation work and and the reuse work. It is, it is a constant juggle and prioritization of or reprioritization of 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 work almost every year now. So if we weren't doing that, um there's always maintenance to be done.
Sure, no, I I really appreciate that, I I think I guess what I was, what I really, one of the things I really appreciate about this program is that we are using addition at staff. So we are able to prioritize one more thing in the queue of things that are of that are the ever, every evolving set of things that we have to do around the city.
It's a moving target, you know, what's a priority today or this year or what I share with staff often is um. Um conditions change and what's a priority today, it might not be a priority tomorrow and um. And so we need to make those adjustments as well, lots of work downtown with sidewalks um. Um and I know the business owners down down there really appreciated the work of our our staff.
Absolutely, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
So uh thank you for the presentation, um is all that equipment city owned or is there some of it that's leased or how does?
Um approximately. Twenty percent of the cost for all of the work was leased or rented, so. As an example, the the paper, one of those rollers, they were both rented.
So so what I heard tonight is, you know, the fact that we don't have to go out to bid, that's cost savings, cause you have a lot of staff time putting all that together. Um and and the the fact, you know, there's there's. The price that comes with mobility and being able to say, hey, you know, we got that corner over there where you couldn't just really do that with a contractor. But the bottom line is it is it, do we save money by doing it this way? Do we save money by doing it this way?
The actual costs.
Yes.
Um there's probably a benefit to the actual cost, the value um remains the same, the value is based off of an engineer's estimate. And that's what we're going off of, but the actual physical cost, um yeah, there's there is a benefit to do it in-house.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I think one of the other points there is that this is a great opportunity to do some of these smaller projects. And the larger projects will still be bid out and contractors will do that type of work. For example, the Twentieth Avenue project, it was such a high-volume traffic roadway that we just felt it would be much safer to have a contractor do that work and. With that volume of asphalt, that it'd be safer to do it that way, so we get the best of both worlds. Uh we contract out the big stuff and we have the opportunity for staff to do the smaller stuff, which makes us very, very responsive.
Great perspective, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions and so uh my first one is uh how are, how do we prioritize these uh these small, smaller projects? Is it by uh level of use and how how much how much people use it or is it by the condition where it's at or is it by complaints that we get from the citizens there kind of? A way to prioritize these?
So for this year, because we focused on local streets, we. We assumed that um traffic volumes were relatively the same across the board. So what we did is we grouped them, we started out with Hugo, Waldemar and Sycamore out east. And we worked our way west, Clark, Bonneville, Maine on um right off of Oregon, then we went over near Butterfield and then we went out. Uh west and knocked those out and there was a couple in between that we knocked out along the way, but we just prioritized it. Uh I suppose directionally that for this year.
Thank you, and then my uh second uh question, I I I I'm just more of a curiosity, but. Uh I I guess not all materials and mixes are created equal, right, and so. Uh what's the quality of the uh of the actual asphalt that we're putting, is there is there a difference or is just one standard?
Well, I don't know that there's, I'm assuming there's more than one standard, but we use s- the city spec and and.
We have, we have a standard spec for asphalt that gets put on roadways and a lot of times the the mix of the asphalt. Will change depending on the amount of traffic on that roadway. And so the amount of oil, the amount of rock, all of that kind of stuff, all goes into like a recipe that uh is standardized. And so we've taken a standard uh pavement design mix that Pasco has used and and asked that that be used on these roads.
Right, thank you.
And uh so what I've kind of seen here is, as I think you pointed out, Mr. Worley, a little bit of a hybrid program, big projects still go, tend to go contractors. Uh we got a li- little bit smaller projects, a little bit smaller rigs. Uh uh but also more targeted uh toward stuff that maybe lend itself to internal staff versus. Uh trying to set up the co- the the contracting and the bid letting and all that sort of stuff. My big question would be practically speaking, we got, I'm gonna guess, six hundred miles of road now or so in Pasco. How are we doing and will we be doing in say a couple of years under this model on making sure that we're maintaining all of those roads?
I think um to add a little bit to what uh John was saying earlier, um. We did have all of our streets within the city evaluated using a method that Wash Dot developed for scoring our streets. And so we had one of our staff go out and walk every street and do a representative sample and give a score, it's called a pavement condition index. A PCI score.
And and I remember that from say five, six years ago.
Yeah.
So so how's that score doing?
We 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 um we have the scores, but we haven't taken that information and uh put it into software programs yet. That evaluate that score and come up with recommendations for a citywide program. So what we did this year, just to get it started, was to take the information that we had. Look at it, identify the streets that were lower in the PCI scores, go out and take a look at them, field verify whether they were good candidates for this year's programs. And then selected those and said, okay, let's go with these first. We wanna be able to get through this year's program, evaluate it, see how it went. And then continue to improve on the development of our pavement preservation program and look at how we can get an overall. Feel for where we're at within the city and what do we need to do to keep our scores at a higher level. And we're not quite there yet, but that's our goal to get to.
Mr. Zabel?
And then, but long-term, I think, Mayor, you touched on something we talked about a few years ago and that is. We have uh a lot of roads that were built about the same time. They're gonna time out at about the same time and so part of what we're trying to do is build some capacity. And that's part of what's what Steve's talking about in terms of the pavement index. And uh we'll probably be micro-targeting in those areas at some point in time in the next eight, six, eight years. To try to stay on top of those areas up on the hill and uh north of one eighty-two as they start to age.
Would it be realistic to ask that they have a little bit more of a comfort level a year or two from now on how we are doing on that longer-term challenge?
Yeah, I think uh, you know, certainly in measurement, yes, but e- even capacity-wise. Last year, recall, East Circle B, which was mentioned tonight, can we do it, that was the question last year. This year was, what does the program start to look like, we got a couple thousand tons of asphalt out, I think that's a good start. And uh, you know, you probably see that program grow over the years, but that's that's a pretty respectable amount of asphalt considering. All the different projects they worked on and we need those smaller projects as well as the. As the big overlays of our tierials and collector streets as well, so.
Appreciate that, appreciate everybody's answer, I adds adds up to a good complexion, Mr. Worley.
And John was gonna ask, could you share maybe a little bit about what you heard from the residences uh in the areas that you overlaid? How did they receive the work being done?
Very grateful, business owners, homeowners, um. Whether it's the overlay work or the sidewalk work we did downtown, the everybody was very grateful um. They are, they were appreciative of council for uh providing the 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 funding opportunities. Um appreciative of the director and the city manager for making that a priority and and um and yeah, so the guys. Le- um equally appreciate hearing that type of feedback, so it's important for us to, or support for them to to hear that.
Mr. Serrano?
Thank you, um I just have an overall comment, I think of the tone of this meeting, um inclusive of the forthcoming presentation. I wanna say I'm proud of our staff as well as the other folks who augment us, like Department of Ecology, TRIDEC. This particular meeting has shown both the foresight and flexibility of our staff. You know, we're talking about a program that I think I just heard Mister Zabel say, this particular one came up a year ago. And now we're laying twenty-one hundred tons of asphalt, you know, we're going to be talking about. Chi- changing in design and construction standards, things that are ultra-critical to how Pasco's going to look and respond to needs. Um again, to me, hopefully. You folks who actually do the work that we try to set forward in our visions. Take a lot of pride in that, cause I certainly, as a council member, one who represents this this city, take a lot of pride in the work. And a lot of credit for what you do, so thank you, um but in all seriousness, it's it it's it is a point of pride to to see folks bring. These ideas and put them to to bed and start moving forward, so thank you for keeping the city flowing in a great direction.
Great way to wrap up, Mr. Serrano. Appreciate it, I appreciate your work too, John, and and everybody's work.
Right, thank you.
And with that, closing pictures of uh, I I I'm struck also by the nice, tidy, clean edge even on those areas that are not sidewalked. I imagine if people living in those neighborhoods seeing those straight uh asphalt edges are are at least helpful. Um and since the theme for the last two is related to public works, we're gonna talk about design and construction standards. Specifications, specifications for public works improvements and Mr. Worley to start off?
Sure, um tonight we are coming back to you again with information about the. Uh designing construction standards and specifications, you may recall that uh staff gave a presentation previously, there were lots of questions. And so staff went back out and met with the uh developers and contractors and and shared information and got some additional information. And so tonight's presentation is gonna kinda wrap things up on that and talk about some of the changes that were made. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dan Ford, our city engineer.
Mr. Ford?
Uh good evening, Mayor and Council, um as uh Mister Worley pointed out, we'd like to come back to you and and bring. Uh what we have done since the last time that we presented on this subject and talk about those changes moving forward. We'll try to be as quick as we can, uh you'll take a look at the number of slides and the detail in those slides, so. I've given some instruction to try to keep rolling as best we can through these, but obviously we will work through your questions as best we can at the end. So uh again, uh the purpose of this document uh is to compile all the resources. Uh into and standards into one document and I think that's really important to make sure that they understand that. These are many of the resources that not only does staff use, but the outside developing community uses and. And the idea here is to try to put everything into, into context so that each item can be looked at with other resources. To provide a consistent, uh, to provide consistent requirements for all public works improvements and create a cohesive document for all parties involved. Again, uh, the idea there is we're trying to be transparent. We're trying to get this information out front. This is not something we wanna surprise anyone with. You walk in the door, you've, you've purchased some property and, and down the road, at some point you come in and go, what? I have to do what to this property? We're looking to try to get that information out in front as best as we possibly can. Again, this document, we also tried to incorporate issues that we were aware of, bo- both historical issues that staff was aware of. But also that developing community and, and what they brought in and, and we're seeing not only with, you know, our specifications, but with our standards. And so there's an update that goes along with this package as well. And, and again, to emphasize a resource, not only for staff, but also the developing community as they try to look at development. Uh, almost a beginning to end type approach as opposed to bits and pieces, uh, strewn within code. Uh, public comments workshops, we touched upon this, uh, January tenth, we actually went out, got written comments from some of the contractors and developers and tried to, uh, incorporate those moving forward. We came back to you, or came to city council on the twenty-fourth of June, uh, and brought this package to you, of which there were a few questions associated with that. And with that, we went back out and actually convened in this very room, a workshop, uh, with developers and contractors, uh, to try to go through the issues that they had and, and create a log for those moving forward that this is what's out there and a link to this, and this has been provided to, again, the developing community so they can see those questions and, and, and the responses to those questions. And again, I'll just quickly say that out of the forty-four comments that we logged down, thirty-eight, thirty-eight of those resulted in some type of a change or a modification to the document itself. So I think that's a, a really good response. And it was a really good workshop, uh, from, from that standpoint. What we'd like to do now is work our way through these chapter by chapter. We'll try to go through quickly, but again, this is to try to prompt or to give you some highlights of, uh, what in each chapter was a really important consideration moving forward. Uh, and I'll turn this over to, to Ben Anon from HLA. Again, you remember him from, uh, previous, uh, meetings. Uh, and he'll be able to answer those. But before I do that, I wanna introduce a couple of staff, uh, that are up here. Brian Cartwright, who does our development review, and Tyler Johnson, who's one of the, our new staff, who's, both of them put quite a bit of work into this. And, uh, wanted to make sure that, uh, they were recognized for their efforts as well. So Ben will take it from here and take it chapter by chapter.
Great, thank you, Dan. Honorable Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity tonight to get through these construction standards. Uh, last time we met in June, we just went over some brief, you know, high level, here's some things, uh, here's some things we focused on. Here's some new ticket items that are in the construction standards, but we thought tonight we'll reformat it a little bit. We'll just go chapter by chapter. Pick out a couple of the items that we discussed at the public workshop and then also just some of those, uh, significant items in each chapter. But we'll try to go through this relatively quickly. That first chapter, it's pretty short there. It's, it's general requirements. Uh, the key public comment revisions there, a lot of those focused on restrictive elements. Uh, first one being transfer of ownership and warranty. Two-year warranty was proposed. Contractors, developers, they all took exception to it at the workshop. They said, that's just too long. You know, by the time we finish construction, two years later, we get acceptance on it, can we look at one year? Other agencies are doing one year, other agencies are doing two years. Sometimes on federally funded projects, there's no warranties on it. So there's, there's a little bit of, of everything when it comes to warranties. Generally, within that first year, if there are any repair items or things that do kinda go south on a project, you're gonna see that in a one-year period. Two years might be a little excessive. And so bringing that down back to one year rather than a two-year, a little bit of a compromise there.
Can you provide a specific example of something that would, uh, this warranty would extend to? Is this, would sidewalks be as an example?
Yeah, sidewalks, say a sidewalk panel settles, you know, over the winter and you come back next year and it's two inches down, just one panel. Maybe there wasn't compaction under that panel, you know, those kind of things.
Well, and I've, but I've found also that sidewalks, say, uh, uh, use, s- some use of certain concrete. It takes three or four years before, uh, things to, to develop as issues. So it, I'd, I'd, I'd be curious, uh, is that it wholesale is one-year work on all, all things?
Mechanical related items, generally you're gonna have a, a larger window there. It might be five-year, but something like concrete, there's just so many variables. Um, external things such as weather, such as, uh, business owners or, or homeowners sprinkling salt on the concrete. You know, there, some of those items, if you do go back to the contractor, it may not even be covered because of some of these external factors that play into that picture too.
Continue on.
Okay. Another item there is the easement widths. So twenty foot was proposed in the construction standards. A lot of the contractors, again, especially the developers says, that's just too much. That's, some of my lots now I can't even use anymore because it's twenty feet there. And so looking, it, it's a balancing act. Say four or five years down the road, when you do need to get in that easement and repair a water main. You've got a dump truck, you've got a backhoe, you've got laborers, you've got spoil piles, you've gotta consider what is that right width? And so reducing down to fifteen feet, generally irrigation and water mains are four, four and a half feet deep. Should be able to accomplish that in fifteen feet. So a twenty-five percent reduction there. Uh, key update there, wasn't really brought up at the, the public workshop, but utility oversizing. There's a pretty significant provision in there now for utility oversizing. So for example, subdivision requires an eight-inch domestic water main. But the comprehensive plan for the water system requires a twenty-four inch through the subdivision. They're required, the developer's required to install that twenty-four inch, but how are they gonna recover the cost between a twenty-four and an eight? And now there's a provision for that in the construction standards. Uh, both the material side and then the labor provision if it's over two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase on the pipe diameter. Uh, moving on to chapter two, it's a new section, it's a development procedure. This really spells out the, the procedure from the day a developer brings plans in the door to construction completion and everything in between. Couple key public comment revisions there is developers wanted a duration from the time plans are submitted to when they're gonna get comments back. There's a fifteen-day period for that re-revision, but on that initial plan submittal. And so there's a thirty-day duration, talking with development services team, especially Brian here. Thirty days is reasonable and when you compare it to Seattle, who's got about an eighteen-month duration right now. It, it puts things into perspective a little bit, but thirty days, the developers said, yeah, we can work with this. Uh, clarified some of the as-built drawing requirements there. Uh, it was brought up, but what happens when we phase the development? So when, when phase, when developments are phased and you come in and you bond for that phase three, phase four to get to completion on the plat, as-built requirements are only required for what's actually been constructed. You can't sit there and require as-built until phase three and four. And so that way you can get to your final plat. Moving on to chapter three, general plan requirements. Uh, one of the, the key public comment revisions there was, oh, thanks, Dan. Outside utility contact information. It seems simple, but developers still, how are we supposed to get approval from all these outside utilities when we don't even know who to contact? It's a valid question. And so city staff contacted all the outside utilities, found current information, emails, phone numbers, and those are now included in the construction standards. Uh, key updates, now there's, there's listed requirements for each type of improvement, so water systems. Instead of just bringing in a piece of paper, which happens sometimes, it's got a line on it that says, start here, end here. And, and it's limited information. That makes the plan approval process inefficient. Now there's a list of what needs to be on these plans when you bring them and submit them to the city. That it's clear by all and, and this is what's required for an efficient process. Chapter four, general requirements for all projects. Uh, we can go through some pretty quick, essentially definitions and terms. Also record drawings, information in there. Wanna just reinforce the importance of record drawings, you know, years past, it just didn't happen. And it's so critical moving forward that good records are kept and GIS databases are upkept and, and this provision allows for that. Chapter five, water system improvements. Again, the easement widths there, uh, twenty-five percent reduction. And also the provision for allowing perpendicular crossings, you know. The provision in here is water main and water main only within that easement parallel to it, but you're gonna have other crossings. And so perpendicular crossings are okay for that. A simplified trench compaction requirements. A lot of the contractors said, don't tell us how to do our job, tell us what you want for an end result. And so this section's been massaged a bit to allow for ninety-five percent compactions, your requirement, means and medicines are up to you guys. Um, hydrants and other thrust block provisions. Instead of just requiring these huge concrete thrust blocks, a lot of the contractors says, can we just use mechanical restraints all over the system? Can we just use mechanical restraints? They're easier to work with, they're actually gonna cost the contractor more, but long-term, you're not gonna have, you know, some bus-sized thrust blocks on some of these larger sixteen and twenty-four inch mains. I mean, they just get gargantuous. And so allowing for, for that provision, there's an alternate there. Uh, corp stops and angle meter stops, that one's not on here, but contractors are saying, how do we test these water mains up to the hundred-and-fifty PSI that you're requiring? The, the corp stops that are provided, they don't allow that. And so we moved those to a ball corp style that are essentially the same cost and will allow the, the, the hydrostatic pressure testing that's required. Uh, consistency with the Washington State Department of Health's Water System Design Manual and referencing that throughout the document. Uh, a section on pressure reducing valve stations and some design guidance there. And then things as simple as valve and hydrant spacing. You know, everybody's then playing on the same page, same, playing by the same rules. If you've got seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot max spacing on your valves, then that's what it is. It's not two thousand, or it's not fifteen-hundred. And then finally, separation requirements, when you've got a potable pipeline versus non-potable. When you've got sewer lines crossing over water lines, you gotta protect against that. And there's provisions for that in here. Chapter six is the sewer improvement section. A couple of things that came up at the workshop were, why does every termination point have to be in a manhole? If I'm eighty feet away from another manhole, do we really need to terminate the sewer line with another manhole? And, and there's gotta be a cutoff point there and a hundred-and-fifty feet is that cutoff point to where cleanouts are okay up to a certain point, then need manhole for maintenance provisions after that. Uh, precast manhole types, prior to the construction standards, it was just one type. Uh, there's two types now that are defined, you know, to improve supplier reliability, uh, pricing competitiveness, that kind of thing. Uh, all viewed as a positive from the contracting perspective. Uh, deflection testing of pipelines. And so video inspections required on sewer lines upon completion. Rather than requiring deflection testing too, contractors said, you've got the video, you can review the video. Why are we pulling a mandrel through fifteen days later? And so now that's not required anymore unless the video inspection shows something that's of concern. Um, consistency with the Department of Ecology criteria for sewage works design, this is similar to the DOH Water System Design Manual, also known as the Orange Book. Um, things simple as manhole spacing, you know, four-hundred-foot max on manhole spacing. That way we don't have these thousand-foot long runs that you can't maintain. And then finally, just some guidance on forced main and lift station design. Stormwater improvements, there surprisingly weren't any comments at the public workshop. Um, however, in the meantime, ecology just put out, I think it was au- in August is when they put out the second version of the two thousand and nineteen Eastern Washington Stormwater Manual. Timing was great, it was just after the public workshop, so we went through that section, updated the stormwater improvements to be consistent with the twenty-nineteen Stormwater Manual, which included some provisions such as the two-point-four inches per hour versus nine inches per hour. That's a big deal when it comes to sizing infiltration facilities. Uh, one of the things of note here is the design storm. Years past, it's been twenty-five years with this new update, it's actually not specified. Now verbally, Department of Ecology has said, you need to design for the hundred-year storm. Well, that's, that's a huge difference than the twenty-five year. And the developers will be knocking on the door when, when the facilities are two, three times what they were with the twenty-five year. Until that's in writing, we would recommend to continue with the twenty-five-year storm and that's what's included in the construction standards. Some other agencies are sticking with twenty-five and others are stick, are going forward with a hundred, but until that's in an approved manual, recommend sticking with the twenty-five. Uh, UIC well registration, that's always been done after construction. Well, the ecology now requires that to be done sixty days before plans are even approved. So it's a little bit backward in the thinking there, but it is, it is a requirement now. And so that said, because the developer still owns all of these UIC facilities until construction completion, those would be done by the applicant, the registration of those UICs and then transferred to the city upon construction completion. Uh, simple things such as minimum pipe sizing for the storm drain are listed in there as well as catch basin spacing. Moving on to chapter eight, street improvements, some of the key public comment revisions were the asphalt section. We were just talking about that with the last presentation. Allowing DOT mix designs that were approved previously. You know, developers shouldn't have to come in with a brand-new DOT mix design for request and approval. Should be able to use that were, those that were previously approved. Uh, weather limitations for paving. So previously, anytime winds were over fifteen miles an hour, construction standards stated, no paving happens. But when it's eighty degrees out, there's, there shouldn't be any impacts on paving there. Your ambient temperatures and your surface temperatures are still well over what they need to be for paving. So made that a provision. Uh, compaction testing requirements, simplify those to where it's two per hundred tons for the first hundred tons and one per hundred ton after that. Contractors understand that, the inspectors understand that, and it's just much easier to follow in track with quality control. Uh, with cul-de-sacs, replace the mountable curb with the press curb. It's just, it's, it's easier for vehicle transitions, fire trucks, et cetera. I know these are real simple details, but it's things that public really commented on at the workshop. Uh, key updates, the MUTCD is, is now referenced and so it, it controls all signing and pavement markings. Uh, something that wasn't done before. There's a section on traffic impact analysis, you know, what triggers that? And then there, there's also guidance on what needs to be part of the traffic impacts analysis. Site distance triangles to define those clear view areas. And then a landscape plan provision that was just recently added by the Administrative and Community Services Department. Standard details, we'll blow through these real quick. The first one there is drop manholes. Easier construction by allowing CDF all the way down to the elbow, same result. Um, the SS three, four, eight, and W four there, casting adjustments. Contractors are saying, just give us one depth of asphalt. We don't want one and a half for water valves, two inches for cleanouts and two and a half inches for manholes, two and a half inches across the board. Done. Doghouse manholes, uh, replace this detail in total with, with something that's easier to construct, but provides the same end result. And then finally, the revised asphalt repair section. Contractor says, why do we need ten inches of inch and a quarter minus and two inches of five-eighths minus rock? Can we just do all inch and a quarter instead of these lifts? Yeah, it's the same result on, on a two, three, four-foot wide trench. And then key updates, the storm drain catch basins were replaced with DOT standard types. They're standard across the state. Uh, found, not foundries, but the precast companies that make the catch basins, they've got those readily available on, on all sites. Um, the street sections, they're refined a bit, they now include lane widths. You get a question a lot from developers is, why is this a forty-four-foot wide street? And now there's lane widths on these details that show why it's forty-four-foot wide. Uh, driveway approaches were revised to meet ADA standards. Cul-de-sacs were revised to meet the International Fire Code standards. And there were a lot of water details going into this construction standards update, consolidated those into about a third, as many as there was to begin with. And that is it. I do wanna kinda say the same thing as Dan. Applaud city staff and management through this process. It is a passionate group of, of city staff that was involved in this project, the workshops that we had internally. I, I was really impressed with just the involvement all along, the, the passion that was shown here and it's just a prideful bunch. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I wanna be the first to say, this is awesome. Uh, we've been waiting for this for a long time. And I think the contractors, uh, this will be beneficial to everybody, get things done, streamline the process. I, I just wanna say thank you. Ever since I've been on the board, this is something, uh, or the council, this is something that, you know, we've been kinda working on to see how we were gonna get it going and, uh, it finally seems to be here. And so this is great. Does this also affect the, uh, this is for the construction and design, but does it also help like the individual people coming in or is that a different? Is that a different, uh, process that we gotta work on that for like, uh, individual citizens that come in for? I mean, can we do something like this for that process is what I'm getting at for the?
Sure, as far as like development, individual citizens coming in and wanting to know if there are certain considerations for their property, for example. Yeah, obviously, some of the standards that we go through here affect everybody, right? The sidewalk, the driveways that Ben talked about, the ADA considerations. But for residential, uh, parcel, those requirements are a little bit different. Those tend to be more associated with building than they do necessarily with the right-of-way. But there are right-of-way considerations, such as widths of roads and those type of things. So for example, a property that maybe didn't have improvements out in. So for example, a property that maybe didn't have improvements out in front of the house. Yeah, those widths of roads and lanes and those those type of things have been talked about. Those would be considered for those particular parcels. In certain areas, uh we may have curb and gutter and sidewalk also. Uh and so again, those street sections will be taken into account with those. Um and there may be, depending again, uh might be kind of rare, but depending on the parcels. We may be looking at water main improvements for fire hydrants or those type of things that are associated. But we look at each and every one of those individually.
Well, thank you very much, I think this is a big improvement and uh looking forward to seeing how this can improve the process and and streamline everything. Thank you.
Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I would just add to what uh city engineer said that uh, and we talked about it earlier tonight, the small scale development. Where councils made some changes that would allow uh short plat type development with with narrower street frontages. You're going to see more and more of those smaller developers coming in and this is going to be beneficial to them as well. Cause it just lays it out really easily, it's easy to understand uh what the requirements are going to be even of a small scale development as well as a large subdivision.
Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh yes, uh I I I'm very glad to see this come to fruition and actually such a. Uh what I perceive to be a quick time since it was brought to to us. And um I really appreciate the response also to uh uh the last meeting uh about including the um the development community. And I saw that that was uh uh seriously taken and and it was actually, you know, really great to see how much involvement there was and how detailed. Cause you know, no, no, nobody in this council could uh sit there and be like, well, manhole should be, you know. But it was really great to s- to see that, um i- i- you know, it was it was very much a collaborative effort and so that was that was great. Um this being a living document, uh how often would this be revised? And 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 um perhaps how how often, I I would imagine you can't be um reactive to concerns. You know, oh, I have a concern about this, let's change this. Uh but perhaps having a um um, you know, a a way of listening to uh relevant concerns about things that they may not feel great about. Uh listening without being just reactive to every concern. And so how how's that process going to play out and how often do we update this, uh since I imagine it's a living document?
Yeah, the intent uh of the document itself is this is a a basically a document that we can change based upon what we are seeing. So if we if we recognize that there's an issue associated with a, say, a particular item that we're specifying that may no longer be available. We ran into this very issue with drain rock. Uh you know, our local uh supplier of rock and for the region, no longer produced the round drain rock that we're all used to. And so we had to change that and go to more of a crushed uh material uh for our drain envelopes and those type of things. And 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 that would be a great example of us being able to effect some pretty quick change to our standards. And again, then that change uh works for everyone. Everybody's on board, everybody knows what we have available and what we will allow within the city.
Wonder um when uh when these things change, let's say a developer went ahead and printed all these and then it changes. Uh so how does that, how does that work for, you know, let's say there's there's changes within this this document and.
Sure.
Uh you know.
They're used to like our normal standards have changed, we we would always include a date, a revision date on the standards themselves. Uh and then uh you the same thing would go similar to what our code really does. Again, those are dates that are associated with the last revision of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to build upon um something uh council member um Alvarado was saying. Um I'm I'm very interested, I I see that it is a living document and that um in essence, this never has to come back in front of council again. Um but I would appreciate periodic updates. Um obviously, I'm, you know, changing the form of rock and it's something that's equivalent or um or sufficiently meets the needs. Uh I'm not interested in being a a bureaucratic step in the in the must approve before. Um but periodic updates, understanding what has changed. Um sometimes these things can um evolve over time in a way that um perhaps wasn't originally what we anticipated or expected or had presented to us. And it'd be, um I think it'd be important to me that we that we do have council periodically um have a presentation in terms of 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 what has been updated and changed.
Sure, and I think that would be very important as well. You know, I think historically uh updates had been considered for standards, uh maybe on an annual basis. And I know that I have held off on those as much as I possibly can, knowing that we were working towards a more uh a doc- document that put everything in in a much broader context and 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 in relationship to each other. Uh so my time here, it's been about four years now, uh there hasn't been a a huge number of changes. Those changes have taken place within this document, um trying to move forward. But I do think maybe an annual update or some sort of annual report on this probably would be a good consideration.
Appreciate that and 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 I appreciate the red line strikeout sort of version of here's what was it on one day and here's what it wasn't the other. But also I really appreciate the um the opportunity for the community and developers and contractors to also have that input. The way that was tracked in this process to have those those questions and here's the responses city had. That is a fantastic way of documenting, why the heck do we do what we did? Um I know we've, as we've, even just in my short time on the council, as we've ta- talked about old um revisions we've made to our code. Um our city code, we don't always have a good history as to the why, where what the source of something was. And I I I know we're we're proving that dramatically and um I I can see that this would be something that maybe would be a good opportunity for us to keep good track of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Also engineers tend to be pretty detail oriented folks, so um that might be in your nature anyways, right? But thank you.
Mr. Melli?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hey, uh, Mr. Ford, thank you for putting this together with the staff, I really appreciate it, it seemed very well thought out. I did have a kind of question, how many, when you talk about you work with developers and contractors, how many contractors and developers did you actually work with? I was kind of curious on that.
Yeah, the uh, if I remember correctly, there were about a half a dozen. Uh you you know, uh basically they filled one side of the room for whatever reason, they all liked to sit together. Uh and I'm looking over here because I was stood right up here and and talked to them, uh you know, and and again, it was a good group. It was a really good meeting, I think it was really uh productive. Uh and I think many of the things, as you see, many of the comments that were made were addressed. And uh you know, we appreciate that, so.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
Big thing, lot of years in the making, right direction, great, really appreciate that. And and uh to this, this is a. Knowing developer community for about sixteen years, it's uh always a case of, but they do it over there. Is this going to be one of those cases of where it might go the other way, but Pasco has a one stop thing over there? Is that, is it, if we, is this potential for a little bit of a leapfrog event?
Well, I I do think that this is the steps uh that we've kind of outlined a little while ago, a couple of years ago. And and obviously it is towards a bigger picture uh on that permitting aspect and kind of moving that forward. And getting, again, getting everything into the same document, I think is a real big step that direction.
I do too, I think we all do, so thank you for the presentation. Uh I would imagine that's something that we need to ad- adopt in.
Next.
Uh next week, so we'll put that on the agenda for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh with that, we go to section five miscellaneous discussion usual, start off with Mr. Zabel.
Just two quick items, uh one, the uh all senior community picnic was last Thursday, was a great success. Uh numbers wise, uh we upped our numbers from two hundred and fifty over in Kennewick last year to eight hundred here. So uh Zach's crew did a really great job, our Parks Recreation Staff into marketing the event, which is pretty apparent. And uh also a lot of work into promoting the event on social media during the event. So it's pretty, pretty neat uh community event. And then uh just a reminder for council, the elected leaders reception this Thursday, uh four thirty to six thirty at at the Reach, so that's all I had.
Council miscellaneous discussion, Ms. Brajas?
Just one announcement, Mayor. Uh Deputy Chief, if you can add in, uh the Pasco Police Department Citizens Academy is to begin October first, correct? Uh October first from six to nine. Uh for the, all of those interested, please go into the police department's um website, download the application, turn it into the police department. They need a minimum of eighteen, I believe.
Yeah, between fifteen and twenty is what we try and shoot for, so yes.
So I invite the community to come and participate to the Pasco Police Department Citizens Academy, it's very fun.
Thank you, Ms. Brajas. Uh two things, uh number one, uh let's see, we have a delegation headed to Colima, Mexico. They came and visited us, some of us are going to go visit them. Uh my understanding is uh uh most of the delegation is leaving next Wednesday and be back the uh that Sunday. Um and also looking forward to that, uh we'll have a good report uh coming back in the beginning of October when we're back. Uh also, next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month, do we have a need for a meeting next, next Monday?
We do not, and I apologize, I was going to mention that.
Oh, it's that's where we're we're covering it and I, because I'm actually well going to be uh, won't be available myself anyway, so that'll work. And uh any other uh material miscellaneous discussion? We go on, we do have need for an executive session. Uh executive sessions to establish the sales price or lease amount for real estate, expected to last about ten minutes. Be attended by the city manager, city attorney. Uh of course, I'll reconvene the meeting after executive session, that no action will be taken during. But after that session, uh council wants to do anything, we can. Uh and uh then we'll all adjourn the meeting. So if it's nine twenty-one now, we'll be in executive session until about nine thirty-one. And we are back from executive session and uh back a little bit early, we do our best to estimate the timeline to do it. Uh no action to be taken, uh we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.